Okay, I call this meeting to order at 6:36 PM. Just note that I think Tim Sullivan is down the line today. He's in London, so he didn't want to come to the little school, but he went to London instead. We begin with public input. Does anybody would like to address the committee? We move on to the student report and have Sylvie St. Kay, class of 2024.
So for some notable academic matters, seniors last day, it's noon thirty-two. Graduation is June 7th this year. Finals procedures start next week. And next week, also Friday, is a half-day for professional development. Some notable fine arts matters, master's was recognized for the spectacular musical at the Stephen Slantive Awards in Connecticut last weekend. They won numerous awards for best sound, lighting, set design, advanced technical theater class, and best overall musical. And then there's also a concert tonight featuring notorious winter percussion and jazz band. For some notable athletic matters, boys lacrosse is at Blue Tower. Girls lacrosse is against Marblehead home today. It's the softball senior night against Hamilton Menum. Girls tennis against Hamilton Menum as well. Boys tennis against Hamilton Menum today. And then there's a baseball game tomorrow versus Newbury Court. Some miscellaneous, there's class officer speeches and elections happening this Thursday. And Newspaper Club is organizing a press conference for the candidates. For a student work report, something I've been working on recently, is my final project for AP French and Language and Culture. I'm making a children's book entirely in French, and I chose the theme of self-discovery for my book. So I'll tell the story of Pierre, the penguin, who is trying all the different sports and extracurriculars and then he finds what he really loves, so yeah.
What does he like to do? What's his sport?
He likes to play trumpet.
Question? I'm guessing this is your last meeting with us. So I just want to thank you for your service and the kind of work you're doing.
Two.
Thank you for your work out here. And you're one of the best of the pharmacy. So good luck on that. We really appreciate having you here. And thank you very much for coming to all your dinners. Ms. Molly, I have a little handkerchief for you. So we begin tonight with the little school presentation. So I turn it over to Mrs. Molly.
So welcome to the school committee. Always a pleasure to have you. I'd like to give a shout-out to our board committee members, Jen Reinders and to Tim Sullivan, wherever he is in London. I won't count him anytime. I'm sorry he's not here, but we're excited to have all of you here tonight. Tonight, you are going to hear from some of our wonderful educators and fantastic students. Our two part-time adjustment counselors, Alexandra Alexa and Veronica Rogers, are here tonight to introduce our character-building program, which we began in January. Mrs. Alexa and Mrs. Rogers worked closely with our students in the classroom on specific character traits and the importance of having good values. Our students are here tonight to reenact what happened at our all-school assembly in February. And they will showcase what each grade level worked on and share what they learned. We will continue this work over the coming years. Also, we have our fabulous fifth-grade science teacher, Mrs. Amy O'Brien. She will give you some brief insight into the return of our fifth-grade science fair, which usually appears annually, but unfortunately, we haven't had one since COVID and the pandemic. With the destiny shift towards more performance-based tasks and investigation, we felt it was the right time to bring the science fair back to the little school. And we were thrilled to have Mrs. Beth return to our school, and we know you will be impressed by the student presentations tonight. Without further ado, because I know we have a lot to get through, I'd like to introduce Mrs. Alexa and Mrs. Rogers to kick off our character-building program with the children.
All right, guys, hello. Thank you guys for coming. We're going to knock off our presentation. My name is Mrs. Alexa.
And my name's Mrs. Rogers. And we are so excited to be here because we have learners that came in here today that took time out of their evenings. Thank you, team. And they have worked so hard on these posters. They actually publicly spoke in front of their old school this year, back in February, in honor of Martin Luther King Junior Day. And they bravely and excitedly said yes to the opportunity to come here again. So can we have a quick round of applause for our students here? Now, leaders, I'm looking at all of you right now, and I'm guessing that maybe there are some excited feelings going on in your minds, maybe some nervous feelings. Do a me-too sign, maybe you're having a mix of feelings right now. I'm having a mix of feelings as well. I get nervous to speak in front of adults. I can talk in front of kids all day, but in front of adults, I get a little bit nervous. My heart starts to beat a little faster. My cheeks get a little red. And so something that helps me, that we can all do together before we start calling groups up, is just take a little deep breath. So in through our nose as slowly as we can. Let it all go so slow through your mouth. And that helps tell your body, "I'm okay. I'm safe." Maybe I'm nervous, maybe I'm excited, and I can do this. Because in order to be brave, we need to have a little bit of nerves feelings, okay? All right, so we're gonna call up kindergarten first. And once they're done, leaders, we'll do first grade and second grade and third grade and fourth grade, and then last but not least, fifth grade. And I'm gonna turn the speaking over to them. So kindergarten, please come on stage.
I congratulate the assistants, Patrick, Cora, and Myra.
Okay, sweet turn. We're gonna turn off the lights a little bit, okay? Sitting down, facing that way. You know, it feels a little bit different. So try and smile a little bit. So really, I'm happy as a little kid. And now, okay? Yeah. You're so good though. All right, and Patrick, can you look at me?
Yes.
All right, go, team.
Our pillar of character is caring. For our pillar, we stepped into other people's shoes to notice their feelings and thought of ways we can show we care. So you care. Notice how people are feeling. Be kind, share, and help others. Sure you care and make the world a better place to be. Thank you.
All righty, well, our first graders, David and Emma.
Our pillar is fairness. Fairness means treating everyone equally and with kindness. We decorate our pillar with soccer balls, bowling balls, baseballs, and basketballs to represent playing. Be fair. Be a good sport. Use kind words. Have a safe body. Include everyone. Take turns. Share and help others when they need it. Thank you.
All righty, our second graders, Harper, Ellie, and David.
Our pillar of character is respect. Respect means showing care about someone with your words and actions and to be generous and friendly when you need it.
Well, our pillar, we create pictures of all different relationships, like appreciating our differences, listening, being a woman, and using polite words.
Respecting others, helping people feel safe and comfortable, helps us learn and grow friendships. Thank you.
Third-grade team, you can now stand up and come join us. We have Emily, Stella, Isabella, and JD.
Our pillar is responsibility. Responsibility means taking ownership of your decisions, words, and actions. We decorated our pillar with superheroes and pizza cups so in all different ways, we can show responsibility in school and in life.
Be responsible. Try your best. Follow the rules. Be honest. Fix your mistakes. Problem solve. Prepare for today. Try to be on time and take care of school materials. Thank you.
And our fourth graders, we have Eva and Francesca.
Our pillar is trustworthiness. Trustworthiness means being dependable, reliable, honest, loyal, and responsible.
We decorated our pillar with little school labs to represent loyalty and trustworthiness.
Be trustworthy. Tell the truth. Admit when you've made a mistake. Follow through on your promises and always be true to yourself. Thank you.
And last but not least, our fifth graders, we have Gwen, Sophia. We have Gwen and Riley.
Our pillar is citizenship. Citizenship means recognizing your place in the greater community through active service and devotion to community members' values. We decorate our pillar with hands reaching toward the earth. In each hand, we wrote things we can do to show strong citizenship. Show strong citizenship, guys. Be honest. Be kind. Help out. Protect the earth. Stand up for others. Try hard. Show care. Respect others and our community. Thank you.
We will be continuing with this program hopefully for years to come and to remind the children and staff, the faculty and staff in the building, about all the hard work we've done over the last couple of months. We're actually going to name the hallways. We have street signs that coincide with the pillars of characters. We have responsibility, Fairness Boulevard, Caring Street, Citizenship Lane, Trustworthiness Way, and Respect Avenue. So those are going up hopefully this week. Thank you to all of you who have seen this program. Now, I'd like to call Mrs. Amy O'Brien. She is our fifth-grade science teacher.
So like Mrs. Molly said, we were very excited to have the science fair returned to the little schools this year. And it became very apparent when we started, they weren't so excited about it. They had no idea what I was talking about because they were in kindergarten the last time the little school had a science fair. So we were truly starting from the very beginning. And I hope it was a good opportunity for the kids to work at home with their parents and also to extend what we do in science class every day, which is to build background knowledge and investigate things and analyze data. And so for this project, they got to choose their own topics and carry out their projects at home and then present to the school. So they did a fantastic job. Very proud of them. So Alexandra, you want to go first?
So for my science fair project, I studied how different water affected the reaction on all sides of the tablet. My hypothesis is that the tablet that dissolves in the hot water would dissolve the fastest. And I tested my experiment by dropping the tablets in different temperatures of water. And I did three trials where each temperature, hot at 104, the cold at 54, and ice at 36. So you can see that as the temperature gets cooler, it takes longer for the tablets to dissolve. And as the temperature increases, the rate of reaction is faster. So my hypothesis was true and true.
For my science fair project, I did parachutes and doesn't size matter. My question was, doesn't size of the parachute affect its falling speed? And my hypothesis was a small parachute will fall faster and a larger parachute will fall slower. And my hypothesis was correct. And I made four different-sized parachutes. From biggest to smallest, and here's the bigot, and here's the smallest. I added two panties to the bottom of each one so they all had the same weight. And I dropped them off from the same height. And the average falling speed for the small parachute was 3.59 seconds. And the average falling... Wait, sorry. And was 1.52 seconds. And the average falling speed for the second parachute was 2.53 seconds. And the average falling speed for the third parachute was 2.71 seconds. And the average parachute for the fourth parachute was 3.31 seconds.
For my science fair project, I investigated if circumference or circumference of mass factors would affect how massive the hoop spins. And my hypothesis was that the small lightweight hoop that's been the fastest. And how I tested that was I made four hula hoops with different circumference and weight mass factors. I made one big lightweight hula, a big heavy hula, a small lightweight hula, and a small heavy hula. Once I made these hula hoops, I tested, we counted how many times they had spin around me in 30 seconds. My hypothesis was right, and the smaller, the small lightweight hula spun the fastest, and the heavier, bigger hula spun the slowest.
Does the committee have any questions, comments?
Um, I just wanted to be first with the... First of all, great job, everybody. So, so well, and also keep the aspect. Love to see it. With the pillars project, when did the students complete the beautiful... Was this during instruction time, or when did that happen?
The students completed them during their FCL period. So they have FCL, a half-hour every week with Mrs. Rogers and I. And they completed a lesson on their designated pillar. And then they took the class to decorate. Student got to decorate one of the little decorations, these little posters. And then they were all glued onto the posters, so the whole grade had their stuff there.
And then they did, where they said, "Awe, we need to rate to explain their pillar." And they have a little assembly?
Yes, they did. So that's what they did in early February. So once they got kind of like an ingrained understanding of what their value was to represent and how to actualize that in real life, once they created the poster. And then we went in a large school assembly, talked a little bit about Martin Luther King Day and the purpose of doing this activity. And then each of our teams got up there and shared very briefly and proudly about their pillar and the work that they did.
Were they the same with the students that presented to the...
For the most part, yeah. Due to scheduling differences, some of our students weren't able to make it, which is why you may have heard like a name said and then they didn't come up. They wanted to be here, but a few of them could not make it. But the majority of us did make it.
Very well done. My other question was on Ryan here. And I'm just wondering, was the addition of any new staff more nature? Did you play any role in getting the fair launched?
No, not this year. We already have our help, but I did it for several years before COVID. So it kind of had a system going, but... Well, kind of.
All right, very good. And how was that dating? I want a big parachute.
No questions, just comments. I think Marilyn, Gwen, and Alexandra have surpassed my science knowledge. I was gonna come and learn something tonight. And I love the character project. I think it's amazing. I love how they did different things, like the loyalty for the labs and the superhero bubbles and things like that. I'm impressed as well, what your character taught me over. And I'm also still impressed by all your public speaking skills to such a live performance. Great job, guys.
First off, I could never come close to this at your age. So congratulations, courage you guys showed to speak in front of everybody. Amazing. Second thing, as someone who's done parachute, you want the smallest. Really, just all of these things, even as someone who's done science fairs, do this at your age and with what you learned from doing these projects, I have to think this is something you'll remember your whole life. I mean, I'm thinking now, but you will. So congratulations on everything. Thanks, everybody.
I'll just thank all of you guys for presenting today. You guys are all excellent speakers. Were the posters that were made, have they been displayed this year, or...
They were displayed at the science fair, on the day of the science fair.
And yeah, the science fair, my daughter goes here, and so we've gone to the science fair in the past. For the kids at the science fair, is it harder to do the project or is it harder to present to everybody else? Because all the other students come in and all the parents come in. What was more difficult for you guys, doing the actual project or presenting?
For me, it was harder to present.
You presented?
You did a great job.
Yeah, you did great.
For me, it was harder to do the project because I had to bake four hula hoops. So now it's harder to do it.
It's hard to do it, actually, to be safe. They know you made the hula hoops. Are those your hula hoops up there?
Yep.
Do you want to show it to everybody too? Because you didn't just buy hula hoops. You did it by selling. You guys made that. I remember when you did it.
I think this probably says, "It's long to look at."
You wish I could have looked at it. I don't have a hula hoop yet. Are you guys hula hoops ready?
I'm gonna have you all get up and have a little fun. Next year, next year.
There we go.
Just to say thank you to you. So you kept seeing a little bit of the social, emotional writing work. As Alexis has, in two schools, she's been a bit there a little. The project is a great addition for our staff, so you brought so much here. Just so Brian, Emily, great science teacher, she's been up here for many years. So a lot of this work that she does, probably all the schools and science for people all over K-pop. This is really phenomenal. Ms. Molly, if you unveil the science tonight, is that the first time people saw this? Or has she been so excited about the science, talking about this project? Thank you for doing such a great job in the little school.
Great job, everybody. So thank you all.
I'd just like to thank the school committee for coming once again. And thank you to our dedicated educators, amazing students, and families for being here tonight. We appreciate you taking the time out of your busy schedules. We know that spring is very busy, lots of sports and events going on. I'm proud to say that I've worked in this district for 20 years. And I've seen the amazing things that educators and students accomplish. Tonight's no different. I believe it's through the collaboration and teamwork at all levels that we make great things happen in one thread. I look forward to this continued success. Thank you again for coming. Have a great evening.
We'll pay like a three-minute recess if anybody's done the point today. Minutes and everything else, but we've got a few minutes, so we're out then. But you're welcome to stay unless we rush those leaving. You'll love it. So excited for the... Okay, we're starting up again. The next thing on the agenda, we have an Eagle Scout project. So Pierce Burrow is here, and. We'll go into that in just a second. So Dr. Daly, Dr. Peterson, draft school committee calendar next year. Stay on the roll for it.
Sure, and mostly, we'll look forward one thing, I just want to make sure. But just better to go forward, Monday's two, two days a month, it's impossible to do that, but a few months is a little tricky. And we're, we have election day as well, so. Similar, I have the principals have to know their schedule will work well, they just feel like it will be worth it, so sometimes I'm sure. Go ahead, Tom, you need it, but just wanted to please, if you have any questions.
For a few months, it looked like they were just one, but I haven't felt that it was vacation and everything else.
One of them always.
I was fine, and again, you can always make slight adjustments to be need. I didn't see anything that was wrong, anything else.
No, for lots of stuff, we're just calling on last year's three.
It's actually my own, so. Committeed. So, I really look into me, I think we can make adjustments as we need. So if there's no changes, we can tell the letter T on motion to approve the school committee that meeting calendar for 2024, 2025.
Motion to approve the draft schedule for 2024, 2025.
Okay, Tim is here, so we'll do a roll call vote. Motion is second. Jeff?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
And an aye as well, that's a five zero. Thank you very much. Okay, now we go back to the Eagle Scout project, so we are honored to have Pierce Burrow here today. So Pierce, you want to come up and, if you'd like, if you're still just doing that, talk with us there. Explain the project, or go over there.
Hello, everyone. My name is Pierce Burrow. I'm an educator at the Northford Middle School, and I'm working on my Eagle Scout project for the Northford 2750 here in Northford. So for part of the Eagle Scout, right, in Boy Scouts, you have to do a project that benefits the community. And I decided that for my project, I wanted to build two sandbox tables with little chalkboards on the back, so that the, it's for the community at the Northford High School, so that they can draw. I decided that I want to do this because the Northford Hood Leisure School has the playground, and they get to use that at preschool, doesn't really have as much things they can actually do during their recess time. So I decided that I wanted to build some things so that they can enjoy a little time outside more. So I have some pictures here, like this is what the preschool recess area looks like now, like there isn't really anything they can play with. And then this is a rough design of what they're going to make. So there's going to be two of these, and this is where the sandbox goes up top, so they can like stand over it, play in it. And then this piece of plywood on the back with chalkboard, so that the kids can go around the backside and draw on it. And hopefully, if we have enough funding, we'll be able to make a little shopping lot to store sand toys and stuff like that. So if approval is granted to create this, I would love to start, or finish fundraising, I've already started a little bit, and try to finish fundraising by the end of this year, this school year, and finish the project before the start of the school year next year. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, question.
What have you done so far for fundraising?
So I went to the Northford High School Association for the Hood School, and they gave me some funding, they gave me $400 for, and helped, very helpful in getting materials.
Did you go to the hood school?
I did.
And then are you going to build this? Do you have the tools that they have to do to build?
Yeah, and part of it needs to do leadership, so scouts from my troop will come and help me, and I'll instruct them on how to build these, the actual sandbox.
That's a great idea. Kids love staying.
Yeah, no, I think it's right. I think that's sometimes they go, you know, build the playground, and now the playground gets, they get to use some more fun, you might have a lot of room outdoors, and have more fun outdoors.
It's an excellent project. I have a couple of questions. I'll start with, you're talking about hood school, you have a little school, so that's amazing. So what do you think the overall cost would be, like private funding, fundraising?
So for both the tables, I'm thinking we're going to need to raise around $800 to $1,000, because some of the materials are a little costly for.
And, and I was looking at the design, would it, in our presentation, I think you said it is going to be a cover as well, with sand?
Yeah, there'll be a piece of PVC sheet that you can slide over the sandbox, so that nothing can get in overnight, and the sand will get wet in the rain.
Do they have to replace sand, or how often do you have to replace sand in the box?
Not for a while. As long as it's covered, it won't, if it's on the ground, it's a problem, but if it's up high, it's covered, you shouldn't have to replace the sand for a while.
Well, and I only have a couple of questions for the broad Eagle Scout. So we've approved a few projects, perhaps, first and foremost, usually they're much older pets, and so I mean, it seems kind of, you know, advanced to be getting an Eagle, becoming Eagle Scout in eighth grade, is that, is that true, or did most people get to eighth grade?
I mean, it's not as common, but I also have a friend in eighth grade who's also working on it. So, I mean, yeah, it's harder to get here, you have to move a little bit faster, but yeah, it's quite.
That's impressive. And what are, what are the requirements to become an Eagle Scout, other than, I know you said you have to do this project, but what are the other requirements for an Eagle Scout?
So you have to be active in your troop for six months, like show up. You also have to have a leadership position, it's like patrol leaders, which is the actual troop is separated into smaller groups, and that person leads that. And there's stuff like that, and I'm also a historian right now, which I document things that the troop does, and I'm in a booklet, and stuff like that. Then there's also, you can teach younger scouts certain skills, like not time, or things like that, which help them learn those things better, and also helps you remember how to do that, and helps you with instructing the new skills. So things like that.
It's great for the year. You speak very well, very impressive, definitely supportive of the project, so thank you for bringing it, doing it for the hood school.
So for fundraising, on the, I think it's at the end of this month, the hood school is having an open house, and I'm hoping to set up a table there, and sell like raffle tickets, and have like little prizes and things, and hopefully get donations and money revenue from selling the tickets to the tots this project.
Yeah, so, so maybe if you do that, you send us all your, some of those like, money as well. Captain Dale? Okay, so, there's no other questions. We'll enter a motion to approve the Eagle Scout project.
Will you approve the Eagle Scout project?
Second.
I give the motion in a second. Roll call vote. Jen?
Aye.
Well.
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Tim? An aye as well, that's a five zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you much.
This project is not a photo, but it's done.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we've done this meeting calendar, so we're back to routine matters, we did book tonight, so, do you want to read the minutes for us?
I'm going to approve the minutes from the May 13th, the February session, Patrick.
Okay, motion is second, any discussion on that? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Well.
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Jen? Tim? An aye as well, that's a five zero.
All right, I'm going to approve the school committee minutes from the open session on May 13th. Patrick?
Second.
Okay, we'll do the motion in a second, any discussion? Good there, too. Roll call vote. Well.
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Tim? That's a five, and an aye as well, that's a five zero. Thank you very much. Budget update, Mr. Conley?
Yes, great, thank you. So in the copy, this evening was the day Monday for the Sogar 124, which reports the rises and interests in the year, and really may. So we continue to be in good financial setting, as we can just, on release of the conference this year. As I mentioned, we had some of the drivers throughout the school year, we did make some, take some action at the end of previous this year, we made special education tuition that we wanted to do, so even though we had some under the state expenses come up, we really So even though we had some under the state expenses come up, um, we really did, we did address those on budget and that gave us additional flexibility. Um, as we approach this time of year, we're really working on closing up for some year. We have all of our available, uh, accommodations, most of our purchases, we're seeing there prepared, maybe some balances for purpose. And I think there's some, some balances that the script is, it's a bit of a challenge for, for example, uh, using efforts we've made to regular usage and this should be available fund in the state for purpose. Um, we did have some recoveries come up through Peter Page back and order, we may ask in the American schools this year, but we're going to address all these needs on budget. Uh, it was a relatively moderate quarter. There's a lot of temperatures, um, and a lot of exposure donations, so certainly the utility is still nice, accounts already within budget. Um, on the payroll side, everything is sort of trending, um, sort of within, within budget. The BRC, which is somewhat typical because of some of the offensive business this year, we're using our professional positions as well as, um, the use of substitutes, that amount is trending upwards in this time of the year. So we are seeing the need to appoint higher, bring in some more people substitutes this, this quarter, which I don't think unusual. So we're just going to, you know, watch that and actually be ready for this year. Um, but everything is sort of in good financial standing and top of the research program. We're seeing those, um, trends of about 70% participation throughout the school year. I think the one school that did really well, was, uh, really well, participation, male soul, male soul, just sort of way up in previous year. Every, every other school did slightly up, every one did, uh, previous years. Uh, so I do think we're in good financial standing to close out the year. Things may be, as we've seen, um, throughout this year, we're supposed to get, uh, to do inflation, everything is being, um, a little bit more sensitive, supplies, shipping and so forth. Things are a little tighter than they bet this time of year, but we're still in good standing to close the year. We still, right now, we are preparing to take some of those year end, um, initiatives that we talked about, there are some budget processes, we make a special education tuition. So we are preparing now to begin to cover those tuition. We will be doing that over the next couple of weeks to help, um, you know, provide that flexibility that will be, is able to be next school year. So without all of the questions.
Does that have a question? Does that have two? So if I recall, the tuition over budget a little bit, that could be unexpected, move in from people of additional services that weren't planned for?
Correct, yeah.
So, I mean, in, in totals, like prepay, we avoided that in a year challenge.
Right.
Do you think we'll be able to, the amount of prepaying, do you think next year is going to be at least what we were budgeting, if not more?
It will be at least what we're budgeting anymore. So we, we may annually budget down $150,000, uh, as the, as a, to the budget amount we plan for next year. So I do just say, we need that. If we're able to almost double that each year, I think my goal is to double that and that's our plan.
And with subs, um, do you remind me, I know we, we had building subs within the budget for this year and, and we've been able to keep the number that we needed all year and, and should we even consider, and I'm just thinking about with these, that's what we've talked about from the Eagle Scout contract, should we even consider trying to hire more building based subs in the future so we have more on staff or how are we doing subs in the total?
Yeah.
Do we have coverage? Most of the time, I have a percentage, we have coverage, like, just curious, can you talk about that?
Yeah, it's a good question. I think I have coverage. Um, fill rates have been, um, certainly better this year than they were in previous year. Most of the buildings, um, we're able to have the, the budget to building subs per building and there's times throughout the year where building something kind of leave or someone would take the position to it for a while, like we, when there were vacancies for a period of time. Um, in some certain situations, we sort of job share that position so that having one person kind of designated there for the week, so somebody two days, three, um, fill that void. Um, but we're, I think we've been okay. I do think kind of two building subs per building, so the budget is starting to kind of squeeze a lot right now. We do have a pool of daily subs, per day subs that have been enough to fill a void when there are more, when it's needed. So I think we're going to be okay. I think that, like, the plan is to continue to follow and share. Uh, I do think some of the building subs are opting not to, um, return, so we're going to be focusing on, on those positions.
Yep. Just to, just to piggyback on that, I think some of the building subs have been also placed in the long-term positions in the district. It's a great way to find new positions, build some trumps, get some, fix, sort of, notice out and put them in their parent job or a teacher job or, so we sort of lay life on the bottom and having the two per building is really great. And I think our, we've been definitely more competitive in the last provision of the daily sub rates and also using the online system. I think those two things together will, um, we've been more successful with the daily subs as well, so.
And I would like to refer, I know that we hired from there for longer term placements and, uh, just needs to out of the, uh, pool. And then, I guess the last question, which is somewhat related, but you've heard nothing about buses this year. It's a good thing, usually we don't hear about buses, but we have. And how have you covered that, um, bus drivers, anything about it, any issues this year?
Very, very few. We have, um, support of the job and, um, the bus drivers that know the groups that have been placed out for a few years, that they, they know the groups, they know the students, sometimes, um, you know, that they're out, they've got an issue for sure with a bus driver or a substitute. Um, so we do have spare, spare bus, have been a little lot, two spare bus drivers that are already there, know the groups. So, um, that's been, been, I think, a good thing throughout the school year. I also think the bus ride system helps when you don't have the registered driver, um, because they can come in, group is there, loaded, it's voice activated, it's then the group lets them know the number of students that should be at each shop, you can see it right there on the screen. So if all those things were gone place kind of years ago, I think helps things run smoothly when you don't have the registered driver there.
And that, that actually reminded me of one thing, a lot of updates in committee on, um, I guess I'll put it in here because it's busing, but, uh, we've been talking about finance planning team. Right now, we won't be parking buses over at this, or to park. And when there's going to be probably, you know, things happening over there, it might be that we can't park the buses there in the future. And so we do get a discount on the contract by having that, so something that we've been talking about, trying to find other locations. I think it'd be a lot of practice, we want to park 10 buses, 112 buses on those, no, but, um, we, uh, just something to put on there. There's a, there's a small economic effect, um, you can be a little bit pissed on the contract, but the bigger challenge, Mr. Conley explained to us, is, you know, by having the buses here, it's more in time, having to have them come from, for, for way to here. But that's just an issue that's on our radar, so we have a little gap if we need to move that for next year at some point in the future. We'll get a lot of, and a lot of it's actually going to be the fire station, I believe, because that's where there might be some relocation of fire trucks there, which, I'm not sure what's about. I think it's going to be based on the fire station.
It pretty much, I think, pretty much, it really, you shouldn't be there.
They don't allow them there, so.
So we, we've got some conversations going on in a few places in town. I see, but, and we should, we don't want to be too far away either, so we have to close. There's a few places we could split the fleet up, we'd rather try it the way down, you know, some, but sometimes you could have, you know, properly, but another time, but, tonight, there's, there's lots of conversations, we can't say there are events at the high school, it seems like it's a huge lot of those events that, that will be, so, we're working.
Yeah. So they have a finishing update, in fact, it's quite an update. Um, you have a question about staffing update, Michael?
Yes, we just, we have, uh, we have, Mr. Ryan Smith, who was a large enough sub, who was a little sub, who's not a long into a large enough sub in your direction, uh, Miss Sally Patterson, Miss Lewis, uh, David, uh, and the business office, we need to meet interns, you want to speak about that?
Uh, sure. So we have, um, I think we actually have sort of piloted a program where we hired two business office student interns, um, who should help the, the office from smoothing during the summer, they pick up on the running tasks, really not just business office, they go and help guidance, administration, principals, athletics, various types, we kind of create the Google Drive, I mean, who needs what each week, who needs coverage, and maybe we have, um, vacations in the office for front door coverage, a phone answering and so forth. So, um, we give, um, you know, two college students, two experience. They, they worked out really well last year, they really became kind of a part of the office and they, they, um, mixed it in with a lot of the culture. Um, and they do technology, they go around, they teach printers, and they, what, uh, docked down the dis team they needed. So we are writing that same program for the summer, it's, it's two positions, um, in four days lead. And, uh, one who's actually returning, they, um, they enjoy their experience and the other weekend as well. Um, so it's been, it's been good, so it's a check. So, so, Egan is returning, she's here last year, she worked out really well. Uh, she actually, so, so did a nice job. She covered, um, when Rosa McKeel, the company in the office was on, on returning, she covered a couple of days leading the office home because she's, she had that flexibility with her class schedule. Uh, and then we actually hired a more ready student, Michael Metozi, um, who, uh, is a student, um, I'm a question, so, so, um, student that, uh, Ryan, Ryan's one of these, yeah, it's one of his seeds, it's one of his business seeds, um, and he's absent, but yeah, he's starting to, no, he's actually in Penn, same, he's, he's, yeah, so, um, keep him starting as well. He's, he's a, he's a finance, um, major, yeah.
That's great.
It's a, it's a great woman.
Yeah.
I think, I took, came up with our conversation last year, she got, remember she got this one, interesting last roll call?
Yeah.
And, and she was excellent, but she's, she's been very, um, also, um, she's been so...
Yeah, because she's, she's, he was right, he was right. And he graduated right in the spring, so he's, he's, he's...
So he really, he really...
Can you hire at least one all summer for, uh, for Brown?
Yes. We've got the technology, we have the grounds, yeah, the summers, so it's going to be a great lot of, uh, trying to replicate.
Yeah, excellent. Uh, bids and donations right now?
Grants?
There is, Mr. King worked on a grant for civics, teaching and learning grant, we just received word of this, $24,000, $2,000 for, for 25, so I understand this grant will be used for a lot of support for teachers and for, I believe, some for, some materials as well, I assume. Uh, and so, as some of what we saw last week, uh, the bachelor school, our social studies and our educators, this is really about, uh, civics, which is, you know, standard and they, we also see senior as well, a lot of features that happen twice, that's a value we have there, but the frameworks that civics in every year, um, and so this is really about helping us to develop what that looks like every year, so, um, there is a motion to...
Okay. Okay.
Uh, we're due to accept, uh, the grants for civics, teaching and learning, uh, for $24,000, $8,000.
Motion is second. Roll call vote. Jen? Go ahead. Jen? Tim? An I as well, that's a five zero. And subcommittee update, so we had some committee meetings from the past week?
It's very exciting. We have this, we have...
We have finance planning coming up. Do we have one this Friday? We don't have that Friday?
This one's...
Oh, it's, it's, it's memorial, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's...
Okay. What was that?
No, I thought it was this Friday.
Yeah, I thought there was, uh...
Yeah, I have, uh, it's a memorial before, it's something that I have some...
Okay. Athletic subcommittee?
Uh, second, is there anything I need to do before playing that? Do I need to...
Sure. Uh, athletic subcommittee, May 21st. So finance planning, that one is May 31st at 8:15 a.m. That'll be out for the time call. Athletic subcommittee, May 21st at noon. Finance subcommittee, May 21st at 3:15. Those are both, this is pretend, uh, uh, right?
Yeah, or, or...
Or, um, administrative report at 3:15. Can I get in at 3:15 or when does it, if I'm coming to the school for the 3:15 one, do I have to be here early or?
Well, 3:15.
Well, it'll empty out by then.
Do you come up at 3:11?
Okay.
If you're for that, it's, it's, you get it, yeah.
Well, either get there early and...
Yes, it's usually fine. I have a...
If you, if you hit the, right, you're, you're, you know, the, the, we will be, we can, we can...
Yeah. Uh, administrative report, Michael?
Yes, I have a few items here. One was spoken about earlier, just want to call out the, the sound on the words, um, and so, as you mentioned, sorry, it's just, we, we wanted four different categories. And it's like, brought the music, the best sound, best light, best second, best music. This is like, winning the podium.
Two years to wrap.
Repeat.
It's really, it's really impressive, so, uh, we have to think about how to recognize the great achievements. Uh, good at the university, we did have Sarah Clifford, they gave you a medal, especially for being this, uh, plant, off the sit down, did a great job facilitating that, was an executive function, uh, and really enjoyed this, we have, uh, educator as a parent, uh, my father, that was wonderful. Uh, this was well attended, there's a lot of, uh, parents, a lot of, uh, such, a lot of engagement in virtual sessions. We have another one coming up this week, I'm going to say, uh, the 22nd, Dr. Miller, so encourage everyone to join in for, uh, complicated normal, our, sort of, uh, revisiting that, but also listen to new information relating to certain generals, including effects of social media, and the effect on, on health, which is tied in with our cell phone grant. And then on June week, uh, we're still, I put out some more feelers for this, uh, community, toward the DC University Center for Social Society is presenting, uh, this is all part of, uh, eight, ten percent, and that's, that's, as well, so we're, we're working with members and joining, uh, we have some school, staff, lawyers, et cetera, et cetera. And then the third item I just wanted to share is that, um, on June 12th, 2023, there was, um, one of the, uh, war items was Phase Two of the American Disabilities Self-Evaluation Transition Program. So we are, uh, we've been contacted by the, a group called Direct Access, who is going to improve the town. They're going to be coming to the schools to, uh, assess our access, compliance, and whether we want to go out there and report, which they will, um, give to us, so I, I speak with the consultant, you know, there will be opportunities for us, um, they said that we're about 75% through, they'll give us some information updates, so I'll, I'll update as we get more information. They are willing to try to come in, um, before the end of this school year, if possible. Uh, so it's really, I think they're going to do some outside work and then they'll come after us, so we're not going to be coming in with students or...
Is it like an, is it an accessibility audit or is it...
It's an audit, yeah, so they're going to be looking at access, secrets, um, you know, clearance for wheelchair accessibility and they're going to give us that information. So this is all part of, um, something that the town's were looking at for the disabilities in the town. And they've already done several town buildings and now they're going to do this, so they're going to do all four buildings on the classrooms and they will look at the outside of the building, probably during school day with our facilities, with the people there. I believe it's just one person that will be, but then they'll be there after school, students aren't there between there and then you...
Have they done this before? And do we have a previous report?
Not in my time, but they've done this, um, work here. Uh, and so this is something that's about, somewhat related to, you know, the requirement for the, for the buildings. It's also, you know, it's something that, um, the wood across the block, so they're going to, they're going to, so, they have to make sure we do this. And what we talked about today was, uh, we did some of the recommendations that we come out of this, there are recommendations of the first step, in compliance, is making There are recommendations of the first step in compliance is making sure that you're generally reporting enough by a year. And so instead of, there's, there's going to be five different tiers of, you know, recommendations for what needs to happen. But nothing is going to be publicated in that. Does that, I obviously asked about the financial application, if there's a major fund or something. Very optimistic, hopefully it's definitely a building in 2015, 16. We're compliant in a lot of these patches, 2006. Some implications in this for the, in the past 12 years. So I think, you know, you can always be optimistic that we're gonna do well. But I think we'll always, you know, I think reports like this is going to find some things and of course continue to address. We want to ensure everyone has access and.
Sure.
So I just wanted to go back there.
Fair.
I just have a question. Go ahead, it's back, but I didn't want to interrupt. What's the cell phone grant?
Sure. So the cell phone grant is the commissioner threw out something at the beginning of the school year. Basically, on the surgeon general's report, it's advisory about the effects of social media and their impact on the medical. And so you can use those funds to curtail these cell phones at school or do something with them. So there are some schools that receive a much larger grant. Where they have these bags, a big longer bag, where the teacher will throw them, put in the bag, box it. You don't check them on the way out. That's something we could look into and it's something I've checked into as a part of this work. I found it cost prohibitive, the size of the grant that we had. But we, what we worry about is we've been running a professional community of teachers. We're looking at our policies. So mostly those, there's some elementary representation, but certainly middle school and high school. Middle school right now, their policy is that they can have their phones or they have to do their lockers. High school, it says that you have your phones on, it's usually a situation. So part of what we're looking at is what the actual practices, what we actually seeing, what does that mean for safety? What does it mean for? But one of the things we are looking at is, you know, even as a parallel study of how we're rethinking Paradox. Some of what came out of that was it's almost like a reward. If you're in good standing, you can use your phone. But the surgeon general's report would probably say, you're in school, you're face to face. Your downtime should be, you put your phone off and have a conversation. So we're thinking about how we're messaging, what it means to calm down and try to be a really less kind of business. So it's, it's more than just cell phones, but that is, it came over the act of the cell phones. And it's like a different social media devices. And so we've had a really good group of about 100 or so educators, some commissioners. They're being forced to, 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 to. So we're gonna present to this group on the 17th, with a lot of our previous staff. And we will present some updates on what our funding is. So we're looking at the policies, thinking about what we can do.
Kind of heard. Yeah. Thank you very much. No correspondence. Future business, we have June town meeting. It's the next meeting, June 10th, 6:45. Everybody please come out. Actually, one question on the June town, on the town meeting. I know that we've been talking about having childcare offered. I haven't seen any emails or anything about that. Are we gonna be publicizing that so that we can get sign up earlier? Okay. If you can just share that, I want to start getting that information up to the parents as soon as we can.
Offered on site?
Yes.
Yeah, we're just trying to get a little bit more control. But yeah, I can even, I can start that process and then we can. What will happen is it will be first come, first served type of thing. So we'll get the administration up there and exactly where I have to make the cut. It's gonna depend on what we want to hear from the community.
Well, and if we can get it rolling early, we can then, if we really need more volunteer, push through it. Two. And actually, one random comment, I would say that this is not really school related, but the fact that we have so tonight's performing arts center. I think a lot of us have been there for like dance recitals and things like that as well. It's, it's great for the community, but I also just want to recognize some of the people, the custodians that are there all the time. And even, even like the people in the performing arts department that have to be there to run everything while these events are happening. I mean, it's just something that you don't think about is how much, how much of a time community that is. But I saw some of the same people that are performing arts that were there all weekend because there were two dance recitals. And it's just, it's great that we have the, the center and it's just another, we're thinking about the override and, you know, people talking about, you know, like where do you cut? Something like that is still valuable for the town overall, just adding the people to run. Maybe running town meeting, we're gonna have members of the master club there to help run, you know, the presentation. Teachers that, advisors on that programs. Just thinking about that particular issue. June 17th, we have a, we could be the CPAC presentation. Honor of the entire personnel. A six, we have two other teams.
Last day. It's one of the last six months. You couldn't fit it all in.
Well, good. Yeah, we, we usually just, we usually, last night we did it at 5 o'clock before town meeting. But we're giving that people some town meetings. So if there's nothing else, I'll add. Sure. Motion to winner. Motion to second. Roll call vote. Jeff? Well, Jen? Tim? I'm a nice as well. Passes by zero. Good night.